Yeah.
They, um.
How are you?
Yeah.
Well.
Wow.
Good presentation.
Yeah. So we work on the whole.
Okay.
But then they never came back and never.
All right. It has like um, the W for Hallway House and my home about that.
I heard that rumor.
I don't know. I don't know if that's true or not.
I, I heard the same thing.
Okay.
Do I see, do I see the deed?
Okay, so um, sometimes maybe, maybe um, we could get together just to bring something about, kind of pick something up and go forward. Um, just because I want to be sure that I'm not, you know, redoing the stuff that you guys already did. So I'll get into.
Yeah, okay.
No, appreciate that very much. Thank you.
You are recording?
Yep, we're good to go.
It is seven o'clock. I will follow me for order. First item on the agenda is to add two items to the agenda. One is discussing repairs to the West Arlington Cemetery. The other is moving the information kiosk in South Park here over near the Commons. So if someone will make a motion to that.
I'll make a motion to add two items to our agenda. Repairs to the West Arlington Cemetery and moving the informational kiosk that is currently in town.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to add the cemetery repairs to the West Arlington Cemetery and the information kiosk transferred to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries. Next item is public comments. So if there's anyone here that uh wants to speak on any issues not already on the agenda, now's your time.
If you, if. And. If you want to move up the kind, the town meeting item before the effective session, then you can.
We can do that, sir.
If that works.
It might be worthwhile to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, Steve McClafferty. Um, uh, last week I was um, at home and I, I went to VT Digger and I, you know, it's where I get news of what's happening on the. Um, and in there was an article and I forget the gentleman's name, who's talking about uh, where he lives over in Chester, Vermont. And at their annual meeting, um, the, they asked the town manager, how much money did the town receive in grants? And he replies, uh, about three million dollars. And in their town presentation, I added up all the grants and it was closer to four point seven million dollars that the town of Chester got from the rioters places. Um, I'll just accept that, you know, I did a dog year this. So my question is, how much dollars did the town of Arlington receive in grants last year? And if you don't know the answer, please don't make one up.
No, no, we won't. I'm not sure we have the answer for that, but we can.
So.
Yeah.
We're gonna get back to this. Yep. So then I, I piqued my interest a little bit more, so I looked at their annual report, just like our annual report.
Mm-hmm.
And jeez, lo and behold, a nicely income statement. Summarized, here is all the same accounts, you know, that on here. Um, and they have their revenues broke out. Their tax revenue is not allocated to any departments. Um, so they must have the same system, the NEMRIC. And they, it was, it's nice and it's clean. And folks said, they go, oh, this is nice. And I further go in, there's a balance sheet. So my, my question to you folks, when am I gonna see an income statement? When am I gonna see a balance sheet? I've been asking for a couple of years and, you know, it just doesn't appear. So again, don't have to answer me right now, but I want to start seeing, at least on a monthly basis, an income statement and a balance sheet. I'm a taxpayer. I, I am the customer here. Do you know? Thank you.
Um, I think that one general comment, um, and it, that's why it's important that we're gonna talk about the town report and town meeting is um, that we have to get started getting a better town report now, because what happens is in the late fall and then the early winter, we're so busy just trying to get the numbers and make the decisions. And so I feel as if we don't always take the steps forward that we should be. So that's one of the things on, that's on my agenda, that I, I don't know when it would be September, sometime when there's not a lot going on.
When it's not so busy.
Where it's not so busy to create the format that we're gonna use. And then um, it would be easier to just slot things in when we go to town meeting.
My opinion, the town reports a twelve month project.
I know, but I don't.
Right now.
I know, but I don't even think about it.
I understand that, but.
You know, and Nick's trying to put it, pull all the numbers together and we're just trying to get it done instead of having these kinds of improvements.
I think we need to think big picture and uh, something that we need to start, you know, and even if we have a.
And then the numbers accurate.
Yeah.
I mean.
In that format.
Uh, and nobody wants extra meetings or anything but a committee.
A subcommittee.
Subcommittee for the annual report and we should get started now on that.
Yeah.
And then it's, to your point, it's just a template that we can.
Put in the numbers, you know, it's like.
You know, it's the same thing with budget discussions. We should really start our budget discussion now for next year.
And we should be discussing the health insurance stuff.
Their next fiscal budget already and there's no reason that we shouldn't be doing that. And again, maybe that's a good opportunity for a subcommittee to actually work on the town budget. So.
Yeah.
Dan, I wanted to think this. I, I've been in accounting for all my life. Anywhere from organizations roughly a million dollars to four hundred and fifty million dollars. On a monthly basis, I have to produce income statements, balance sheets, cash flows, trending analysis. Doing it once a year, it just does not do it. I don't know how you are managing the town without having at least, I'll say every other month, an income statement or a balance sheet. I know, I, I always worry about cash and cash flow, because cash is king. And if you don't know where you are, um, you don't know where you are. All right.
Um.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Another thought that I had, and it kind of comes around to Steve's uh, thought on an income statement and a balance sheet, is that I think as a board, and this goes with budget, and I think this comes, falls all right back into town meeting, is that if we did have a monthly um, we need to see where we're at monthly against budget as a board for things like payroll, right? And we're buying supplies or whatever that is, where are we at against budget? And also if we know that we're gonna have a shortfall for whatever reason, we can adjust budget mid-year or say we're not gonna spend that. So I think that goes right along with an income statement and a balance sheet to understand.
Look at the budget. We get periodic printouts of where we are in terms of spending. So it's not quite what he's talking about.
It's not very clean. No, it's not.
I'm not saying that it's clean, but it's not like we don't look at anything. We do look at that.
I didn't say we didn't, but it's definitely not clean and it's definitely not what. I, I don't think that it is clear enough and it's something that I believe that, you know, the treasurer as a hired position from us should be able to re- prepare a very clean and concise report to give to us as managers to look at and then we can make decisions if we need to scale back hours or payroll or number of people or whatever it might be based on where we're at uh, against budget.
In addition to those two reports, which I think we should do, is for our planning purpose, it would still be a public document. Cash flow forecast that we revise maybe quarterly, at the very least quarterly. And that way the treasurer can look at it to anticipate borrow.
Right, so we don't have to have those last minute emergency votes for tomorrow from ourselves.
Yep. Well, we do that normally.
Last minute emergency.
Oh, we have, we have some of those.
We can definitely have those.
But uh, I'm just saying if we have a cash flow forecast, even if we update it for three months at a time on a rolling window, then that, like you said, cash, the cash flow forecast is almost as important as the other two reports. It's not more important for immediate stuff and decisions.
Yeah.
So I think we should add that. So this is kind of evolving, especially on the, on the um, town meeting discussion, but um, let me do one more thing.
Todd had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just want to follow up on uh, on, on Steve's point and what you proposed in saying. Back in the fall, we made a presentation to you suggesting that to keep things simple for you, uh, you create a, what we call a dashboard of key financial figures for the town that you need to see every month. You don't need to see a blizzard of statements, but if you have a dashboard, it'll tell you where you are in certain, the budget, the P and L, the income and expense, the cash, the balance sheet, uh, uh, and uh, other, other key data strictly on a dashboard.
Mm-hmm.
If you want, uh, if you want to go back beyond that, then obviously you can dig in and get more information. And the other one, getting back to Steve's point about the balance sheet, and I brought this up at town meeting, uh, we get one bank statement from uh, Bank of Benton. Uh, and he had that two million dollars in, in, in cash as of 2031. Um, and uh, and that, as a CPA, that raises a huge concern for us as, in, in our profession. That uh, all this money is in one account at one bank and uh, you know, and as I said at town meeting, I hope nothing goes wrong with Bank of Benton. But it, it does raise a question of you as managing it, we should, we don't have two million dollars to spend in operations in town. But some of that money over several years, a lot of it, I think it was a million four with your uh, your uh, reserve fund, your town board reserve fund. That's not available to you on a day-to-day basis. The other cash is obviously yes. So again, it's just, it provides information to allow you to manage.
And I was, I was quite struck by that because my understanding is when we do that borrowing from ourselves, we always repay it with interest. And so I was like, well, what kind of interest is there on this account? Is it a checking account? I mean, why can't we have a short-term CD? Once you have that amount of money, a, a short-term CD. Because we know we're not gonna, exactly, for the, we're not, we may borrow some of them, but we're not gonna borrow all of them. So I felt that Mr. Killen raised a really important question and that um, possibly we should split some of that money off into a CD, but I don't know what the legal structure and the constraints are on the town in terms of how it keeps that money or manages that money.
In the treasurer's office about the investments. And so you can request the treasurer to do that as a person that reports to you. So.
I didn't, I, I thought that might be the case. Okay.
You do have a, uh, you, you get a good interest on the account.
We do. Okay, good.
Because it's on my account.
Yeah. It's my bank. I understand the concept. All our eggs in one basket. It's not a good thing. All right, um, we're gonna postpone the executive session till after new business item six point one, which is the discussion, which will kind of be an ongoing discussion where we are now for the uh, uh, post-town meeting critique, I guess. So I just need a motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting before we go there.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting that I presented.
So, second, second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Cynthia to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any vote?
I'm saying over here.
Motion carries. One up standing. All right, so now we're gonna move right into the town meeting discussion. And uh, my thought here is just, let's look at what we did right, what we did wrong, what we can improve. And just kind of a thumbnail sketch of what are we, anything anybody observed, uh, including people that were at the meeting. That we need to do other than something we've already discussed on. Go ahead.
Um, I think that we did have one gentleman who mentioned the question of the town administrator having a separate report in the town meeting report, and apparently he's the one that talked about it at the previous town meeting and we didn't understand what he meant. At least I don't. I don't know about, about you. So I think that um, that as we go forward, that's something that we should think about, even if it's, I mean, it doesn't have to repeat what the board says. It can be, you know, about other aspects of the town administrator functioning or whatever. Um, and so I think we should make a note of that's something that um, that should be included. But the more substantive um, issue has to do with page thirty-one, which is the budget summary table. And um, the, the, this is the page on which a couple of things happened, if memory serves. And if anybody else needs to correct me, that's fine. But um, uh, first of all, there was some kind of error that had to be corrected. And then John set, had to do that thing where he says, we're gonna take this from this and the amount we're actually voting on is this. And um, it seems to me that there's been this kind of a verbal transaction statement at most of our meetings since I've joined the board. And it drives me nuts. It drives me nuts.
Saying there.
It should say what we are voting on. And if there's an error, then we can correct it. But the number that people will actually vote on should be written in the.
On the floor.
On, on, if, on the floor, it should be written in the, so all the adjustments, whatever sequence of adjustments, and then highlighted, this is the number you're actually voting on after the revenues or whatever, the non-tax revenue. So um, so, so that's something that I really wanna um, highlight and um, and make sure that we can get. And Nick, I would appreciate any, if you have any insight into whatever the mistake was here or how we can do this better.
So the mistake was a simple, forgot to update a number from last year.
Forgot to update a number from last year.
That's a, that's simply a.
That's approved reading.
Approved reading too. Um, but ultimately, we, the number that we voted on was still there, but it still requires some explanation to understand it.
That is not, oh, the number was there. If there hadn't been a math error, the number would have been correct.
The math, the, the, it didn't make, it's the, the number that we voted on.
No, it's not. This is what we voted on.
So that was the non-tax.
That was not there.
Yeah, but the, the number that, that, the operational number is that one point seven nine oh three um, number.
But it says amount, no, amount, okay, so all right, amount to be raised by taxes to be voted from the floor, one four oh five.
Right.
Total floor budget exploding on about, see, I don't understand.
Yeah. That number, that, that number is the correct number that you vote on, but that's enough, that should be explained more. Maybe there should be a paragraph that explains how this is calculated.
So in other words, this is the floor budget.
Yes.
And then it, it means that this is what you will raise by taxes.
Right.
This floor budget means.
Correct.
Okay. And if it hadn't been a math error.
Six or seven.
Yeah, no, it has to be better. It has to be better.
Yeah. And this, and this hasn't had more explanation in the previous year, but there's more explanation that you've done.
But this is, but this is again, the kind of thing that I was just saying that every year I think about it and then the next year, we're just going, us trying to get it out and I don't bring it up.
And some of this comes from the fact that the budget that you guys all talk about when you're approving the budget ends up being a different number. And maybe, maybe at the outset, when you're talking about the, the overall budget, you, we should start introducing some of these alternative top-line budget numbers and that.
I, I don't think, I don't think that, I don't think that the actual number that we're discussing when we're looking at the spreadsheets or something is so important as that when it gets down here, there's a clear flow and there's some text explaining it. That's, that's all I think.
To be, to be seen as explained.
It should be so simple that even the PhDs.
That's right. Because right now, just one can't, so you know.
Ultimately, I look forward to taking ideally one to two phone calls from your, your future administrator when you're, when they're starting to prepare this to say, okay, what can we do better? What, well, uh, let me go and explain some of the key pieces of this. Or the nice thing is, most of this all, like, all this is our, is gonna be there for them, including all the calculations to make it all work.
Yeah.
Um, including the place I forgot to replace, but it should be, but short of adjusting that language on that's on those. Why is the number in the table gonna be inherently always different than the number down below that you're voting on is gonna always be a challenging question.
Right.
Because it's a disjoint that's, that you can't really fix. Because floor budget numbers always.
You can't fix it, but you have to make it clear why it's different.
It should be printed, not just.
Right, not just verbal.
Correct.
It should be printed in there so that people, then they can ask questions.
And according to Nick, the one million seven hundred thousand, that is the.
That is the number. That's the number, that was the number at the end of the slide deck.
Yeah.
That no one ever saw. Um, and, and things like that, where it's, where some of this was, it's was written in a way of an assumption that there was going to be a slide deck that put that, the number that you're voting for in big text on a screen in front of everyone.
Yes.
Um, and it didn't rely on this because when you're working through a town meeting slide deck, you're doing it to try and be clear about the numbers that you're voting on and you're deliberately setting aside all those backend numbers that can likely have to question. So it gets a little bit easier when you actually have a bit of representation where you put in big, big white letters on a screen surrounded in orange. This is the number you're voting on. Um, it, it can be a little bit tougher. Let someone help us, I would say.
And we did have a slideshow and.
Yep.
Uh, partly my not communicating correctly with the moderator meant that the budget actually was discussed. One question was asked when it was passed, the first slideshow, like.
Yeah.
So then I whispered in his ear, I said, they passed the budget. I don't see any, you can put the slideshow on. Because we'd be rehashing the entire budget.
But you know what we might want to think though, is to have that final slide explaining everything and to put that up.
That should be.
When we start the discussion.
When the moderator talks about it.
And then we can always go to different charts. Yeah, go, be at the end, be at the end and then you know.
And even in the warning, make, at least to make a note to the moderator that at number two, then we do the slideshow, then, you know, just a sketch of, of the outline of.
And you did use the slideshow at the, at the informational.
We did.
There might be a case for an annotated word, it goes to the moderator that has like the select board notes um, that aren't gonna be published on the morning because.
Right.
It shouldn't be publishing comments in the morning.
Of course.
Um, but certainly there.
We could do an annotated word.
For guidance.
Does that, so he doesn't skip something on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't make any difference this year.
Right.
But it was like.
Oh.
We passed the budget. We don't need the slideshow skip.
Normally there's a meeting between the moderator and the administrator leading up to town meeting. That meeting was a very brief phone call and I think that it's important that that meeting be some, a little bit more.
Well, I called him the night before you talked to me. And it never occurred to me that, that he was gonna put that.
Yeah.
Put budget up before we even did the slideshow.
I think there's a little bit of rehearsal.
That's a, that's a communication stuff.
And what, what I think might be an idea would be invite the moderator to a discussion and see if they can maybe moderate the discussion. Um, that could be an interesting Google and see.
You mean the information?
And the information session, the information session. That might be an interesting way to get a dry run on this a little bit.
Yeah, that might be a better way to do it. But anyway, we, you know, like I said, I, I didn't go over the outline with him at all. Uh, thinking you were doing it and you probably were thinking I was doing it. So anyway.
But also those, like those pie charts and things that Nick did work in.
I thought those were excellent.
For anybody, and that answered, I think, a lot of questions.
That was definitely.
Yeah.
Those were very good. Uh, anyone, anything else that you guys noticed? I did speak with Todd today about the one thing that, that I was concerned with was uh, the acoustics in the building and the sound system.
Horrible.
And he did say that uh, there's a hub, or he described it as something, but there's a hub in the system that is broken. So that, that's going to be fixed by next meeting. We should have better acoustics. But I suggested that depending on the size of the meeting, we may want to go to the MAC Center.
I thought all those people could have fit in the MAC Center with no problem.
Hundred fifty could.
Yeah.
I think, I was asking about capacity.
Yep.
And I think he said it's a hundred and seventy-five, maybe.
It's like.
But if we have something controversial for, for a lot of people out, we'd have to be careful where we at.
I think we should stick with the gymnasium unless we become sure that it really is gonna be smaller. If the system gets fixed, that may help. But I also think that again, the putting this on the moderator or one of the board could speak up about it, but people don't hold the microphone in the right place, so we need instructions where you hold the microphone. And then nobody can speak without the microphone. You can't just stand up and start talking because people around you will hear you.
From doing a lot of conferences and events that nobody will ever use the microphone properly, never, ever. And you can't tell people to do that.
The moderator could read the question.
Problem.
That's one way of dealing.
And.
Repeat the question.
Even if the sound system, the hub or whatever in that portable sound system gets fixed, the acoustics in that room are not, that will not make it any better. It'll just make bad acoustics louder. Because it is not made to carry voices.
Yeah.
So if we could have it in the theater, the theater is designed to carry voices and not have all of that extraneous ambient sound. So people would be able to hear better in there.
One, one thought that he had as a possibility, and it's extremely preliminary, is go to the Commons and do it in the cathedral of the.
Acoustics are much better in there.
Better in there.
Much better.
And we might not be running up against the capacity issue.
Correct.
So that was very preliminary, but.
If, if you feel that, you've had a horrible town meeting, relax. Because it's like capacity three hundred.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that would be.
We'd never know.
I, I think the theater type venue would be much better for, I mean, that is the one thing that I heard is everybody, and I've heard it year after year, it's so hard to hear. And I know one year we did have it in the Performing Arts Center.
Because of the repairs.
I think we had, the gym was closed, right?
Gym on the eighteen.
That's right. And it was much easier to hear and converse and, and hear the audience talk to us and us talk.
Well, what did we have? Did we have like a hundred and twenty or something at this moment?
Hundred fifty this time.
No, we had a hundred and fifty this time.
Like a vote of fifty-nine or forty-nine.
The official number was between those two numbers.
He uses a stage for chairs too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah, there's a.
He uses a stage for, with chairs as well.
The vote was a hundred and six.
Yeah, so how did we have a hundred and fifty? How do I understand?
It would have been a bunch of potential.
It was all thanks for people when they're voting.
Those are guys.
Years ago, when we needed the gym, if you recall, we might, um, there was a curtain that cut the gym in half.
Yeah.
And sometimes we just eliminated the city up to one side.
Better.
And that, that actually made the acoustics better. There was one year where we smoked from the, up near the stage, not on the stage, but near the stage, facing that curtain. And then everybody was down here. And that wasn't too bad, but with the full gym and the echo chamber.
Curtain doesn't exist anymore, right? No. And that, I mean, that would be a lot of thought to absorb the balance of the audio, which is what made that much better.
But the uh, the um, narrowing, cut, basically cutting in half the room for.
That also makes a difference.
Helped a lot.
Yeah.
I did hear, but GNAC, nobody had any problem understanding that. Because it must have been the way they had the microphones configured or whatever, or the quality, whatever, whatever it was. But people out there had no problem hearing. It was the people in the gym that had a problem hearing. So, but I wanted to, maybe we can resolve that once and for all by either a change of venue, uh, change of system. But I, I agree with you that even if we have a good sound system, when you're echoing through a canyon, it's gonna echo through the canyon.
I, I just don't know what would happen if we were in MAC and for whatever reason, a hundred and eighty people come. What do we do then?
You should definitely do a floor room with a video feed of some sort that has the GNAC.
Or you pull out the bleachers and you move everybody to the gym.
Then you might as well be in the gym. I, I, I'm sorry. You know, it's like, I don't know.
I don't know. The, the Commons may be an interesting conversation for a town meeting and it also gets people to their venue to see it.
Close to the park, hopefully some parks.
You're gonna run into a nasty parking screen at the Commons because of the facility is not meant to, they can't let me cars. But you have a bunch of, you have hundreds of spaces when you include street parking in the area and walkable. It's not that much longer to walk from the end of parking lot to the entrance of the gym and back in, all the way down to the, to our end. So you could absolutely rely on there being enough parking in the center of town. It's just gonna be.
We might be able to overcome that by doing a shuttle from the school to.
Yeah.
I, I don't agree with this. I think we need to use public space as for a public meeting and avoid the parking issue and just try to include the sound system. But we can talk about this more.
Yeah, I just brought it up as.
Nope.
Something to discuss.
We definitely, we definitely need to, um, I mean, obviously, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna repair the sound system, so that's first of all. And I take Matt's point, but we have to keep trying to get people to use it properly. It'd be probably possible to do better than we have been doing, once it's repaired and if we can provide instruction.
Want to make sure we circle back to?
Yes, go ahead, John.
Uh, thank you very much, Diaz. I have some comments on this copy you're discussing now. And I'll hand this out to you at the end of it, when I'm finished.
Yep.
I'll be one for that. Uh, to answer your other question on the bank, uh, they paid two point five percent and we earned fifty-nine thousand, a hundred and eleven dollars. Okay, so.
But I mean, CDs are four percent.
I know, yeah, yeah. Well, that's a discussion for another day.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the uh, I know change comes, uh, not very easily. The, um, I know change comes, uh, not very easily, uh, uh, I don't know that from being around you. But I do have some comments because I was at the town meeting. I was right up front and, um, uh, and I could not hear the, uh, I definitely couldn't hear the two speakers, uh, Kathleen James and, uh, and Hunter with it. And, uh.
Rob Hunter.
Uh, the, uh, and, uh, and I don't want to, you, you already discussed. Uh, uh, you know, what, uh, you know, the sound, uh, but let me just say this. I have some suggestions on enhancing town meeting.
Okay.
Um, update, uh, this, and, and, uh, to update the assembly on what is taking place in our town. In other words, uh, the chair should give the state of the town. Uh, again, these are just suggestions and, um, uh, have, and then we'll continue. Have the meeting in the Arlington Common Performance Hall or the MAC Center. And have a better sound system for all the meaning to, and, and for all the meaning to see the exhibits. Now, notwithstanding some of your concerns about the commons. Second to the, uh, Josh Sherman's recording studio, that has one of the best sound systems in town right now. Uh, they spent a lot of money on it. The other thing they have, they can handle three hundred, uh, people there, uh, uh, as they do with the fly fishing. And the other one is they have a video screen that if you're in the back of the church, uh, the performance hall is formed now, you can see the screen. I, whereas I, I'm sure if people at the right end of the gym could not see that screen, that was right in front of me at the, at town meeting. I'm not, you know, not that you show it a lot, but, uh, it's just another thing. Uh, if we're gonna have a meeting, how, how will we get all of our audience to participate? Uh, another one is, um, invite to the meeting and introduce the leaders of local industry and businesses, especially if there has been changes. Now, may I ask, how many of you met Josh Pang?
Once.
Uh, how many of you, you met him? Right. Uh, uh, you all knew, uh, Chip Kendall.
Yep.
And, uh, and, and, uh, and, um, what's the name of the former of, of president? Josh is now the president of Mackinac. He's been here about a year. He's, uh, uh, very committed to our community. They just added, I think, close to three to five million dollars worth of equipment. Uh, and he's very, uh, uh, glad he's here in Arlington and the company's here and they're expanding. Uh, biggest concern he has, of course, is, uh, lack of, uh, uh, young people to work there and getting so many other people coming in from New York. His biggest, that's one of his largest concerns, he told Todd and I, uh, when we met him. I'm just saying, he, he might be someone you may want to have come and speak at town meeting and introduce himself. Or you introduce him as our new leader of MAC. Um, uh, also, you know, Orbis, what, you know, what are they doing? Even though Orbis is not in town, they are contiguous with our towns. Uh, interesting, you know, people always ask which Josh Sherman and the, um, uh, old, old mill, uh, plan, you know, what are their plans? Have them as a guest speaker at, at town. Uh, uh, introduce the assembly to the town's employees and services. We have a number of new employees, the new elected officials. And tell them about the highway department, the rec, the, uh, you know, the, uh, the administrative office, fire and rescue. Update the assembly on what may not be taking place. For example, if you're not going to continue with the wastewater, Benedict Bridge, new firehouse, plans for the high school. Um, and, uh, and the lack of growth, if there's any lack of growth in families, which I believe there are here in town. Because as I said to someone here the other day, one of the most important statistics in the town report, in my opinion, was right on the front page. And that was the population. Uh, and that is saying somewhat constant over the years. Um, uh, what are the, what, you know, and, 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 and discussing those things that are not going to take place, what are the ramifications then? For the clinic, for the Arlington Commons, for local businesses. Uh, and then add to the town report, the town's year-end financial, go back to, uh, uh, Stephen saying, add to the town report, uh, the, the financial statements of the balance sheet, the income statement, and ideally a cash flow. You know, how, what, what we started out with cash and how we use our cash for the year. Another one I keep, and I keep mentioning this to you folks, uh, I want to address the growth in the town's grand list. Uh, uh, and I have it, and you'll have it here. Uh, the grand list, uh, right now is, is, uh, Joe and, uh, they're working on it. Uh, is approximately three hundred and twenty-five million. Right? Last year was three hundred and twenty-four million. And the year before it was three hundred and twenty-two million. Uh, that to me is, you know, uh, it's a little, uh, anemic, uh, and, uh, uh, ideally we'd like to see it grow, uh, uh, more. And I'm sure when you do the reappraisal, it's gonna, uh, obviously, uh, the, you'll see a big jump there. But, uh, from where we are, it'd be nice to see the grand list go up because that, that's a very key uh, and tangible asset for this town, uh, is our grand list. And you really want to protect that, as I said. Address the town's population, the status of housing. Um, and then, uh, make the report more personable, as in the past, by showing photos. Uh, if we have new employees, new elected officials, uh, uh, it doesn't hurt to show them in the report. I mean, uh, many people, uh, uh, I'm sure would like to know, who's in charge of, I'm just picking on, uh, the rec department now. Who's in charge of our recreation? Uh, who's, who's our new treasure? Uh, and, uh, we have now our new, uh, uh, we, we, we don't have to be so uh, uh, literal with the figures, which the reports are dominated with, that there are some, obviously some reports by various organizations in the back. Um, but we can have, we, we can make the report more personable.
Uh, can I jump in on that? Uh, one model for you guys to think about next year, look at Josh, uh, Brays' report from the water department. Because, and that could be a model for some of this. He did, he really did do some of this. Hey, I'm a new water guy. I just got hired a few months ago. Let me introduce myself. Um, so that might be something that you might want to either recreate, have some kind of technical report that really personalizes. This, that's an opportunity that if you really want to go down that direction, you have models to use.
Now, uh, that's, I'm just suggesting town, uh, uh, folks, including yourselves, I mean, uh, um, and, um, uh, now I have something, uh, really, uh, uh, out of the box. Uh, have the town meeting on a Saturday morning, on a Saturday morning with refresh, with a refreshment break between the town meeting and the school meeting or the school meeting and the town meeting. Uh, where we can just mingle for a few minutes before we get into the next meeting. But maybe we can have more families here and more folks down on a Saturday, uh, than on a Monday night. Uh, I know that's been discussed in the past, uh, but again, I, I, I throw it out. All I'm just suggesting is that we think a little bit outside the box. And, uh, uh, because, you know, the popular, the, the town meeting, not just in Arlington, but throughout Vermont. The, uh, the number of people attending them, notwithstanding Zoom and, um, and, you know, and local access, uh, is really declining. Uh, and, uh, we, we, we have a chance now maybe to, uh, do things a little bit differently. And I'll leave this with you, uh, uh, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Don. Food for thought, or shouldn't? Um, it's kind of circling back to what you were saying about introducing people. I'm not sure it was a bad idea. I'm not sure a town meeting is placed for it. But we have a town web, uh, website and we have a, a Facebook page and we can maybe highlight individual people for a given time because then we uh, either do a video clip or, or something with bio that we could introduce them on a, maybe a month, monthly basis, highlighting an individual within a town, uh, hierarchy.
Well, I went down the, uh, the problem to me to some degree. I was at the, I called the writing specialist that I've heard of a long year.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I overheard, uh, folks talking. Uh, one was asking, uh, I came by three thirteen and I saw the, uh, the MAC place. Is that where they make the trucks? And, uh, you know, and I'm aware of the town, but they thought it was.
It is called the same.
Uh, and I was saying to myself, wow. Uh, wouldn't it be helpful to know, you know, exactly what they do there?
Yeah.
Now, whether you, I, I agree with you, whether you do that town meeting, uh, but.
To really do it justice, in the case of this year, we had two new hires really close to town meeting. Uh, the water department and so it, it would, it might to introduce everyone would just prolong the meeting and probably piss everybody off.
No, I think it's.
Yeah. But I think you could delve into it a little bit more, uh, in detail per person if you did it either on the website or in a format where people can search it and then highlight it somehow. Go, go check out this person at the website and gives you the rest, all of that.
Well, there's five hundred and forty of us that are on the water system.
Yeah.
I think they round roughly by the way, something like that. Uh, and, uh, it'd be nice to have met the new, uh, manager.
Yes.
We always knew Peter. And, and we all, and we all know, um, the ver- uh, we all know, being here for a whole year. But a lot of the new, a lot of the folks don't know.
Of course.
And he's a key, a key figure in town.
Yep.
Uh, um, so, um, uh.
All good things to chew on, for sure.
I was just gonna say, you mentioned a good idea, the website, but the website has to be updated. It has to.
That's the other thing. That's the other thing that I, uh, I haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, okay.
I have talked with, uh, most of the people in the building that really do the website. Town court specifically, it's time we do a thorough revamp of. Probably been ten years. It's time maybe even get a easier to use product, so.
Yeah, but we're, but we're pressing off like backend, it's getting increasingly dated.
Yes, yes.
As well as all the interfaces and stuff. Yeah, it's been exactly the same since you guys get on with it that much.
Right. So it's, it's time, past time to update that whole system.
And, and you, you have changed. I mean, uh,
Yeah.
Most of you are, are too young. You remember acetate slides. Uh, we used to, uh, put an acetate slide on a screen and it showed up on screen.
Very well.
I didn't use Xerox. Uh, or, uh, then we had, you know, the, uh, the pad, uh, um, and, uh, and now you go to, you know, these very fancy devices for videos and so forth, uh, which is changes, uh.
Yeah.
And, and it's done very well and then we, you know, move along. But let's not lose sight of who we are and that is, we're really a town of people.
Really.
And, um, and it helps to, you know, to introduce everyone, I think.
I don't disagree. Yes.
Just with Don's, um, items, I was thinking, uh, at the meeting, they said it was hard for uh, parents of young kids at home for them to attend the meeting. I could round up some students who need community service hours. And we can open up like a daycare or childcare in the library so that parents could attend the meeting.
That would be awesome. That's a good point. Yeah. Any other thoughts, comments, critiques?
Good.
Thanks for sharing your input.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone, for the input. That was very useful. Um, we do have an executive session briefly, uh, and the reason we need it to establish is for personnel.
Did you want to do the repairs to the Arlington Cemetery in the kiosk before the executive session?
We could, we don't need to.
Okay, that's fine. I, I didn't, no, I didn't know. I didn't know.
Several of them.
Yeah.
This one is not upside down.
I know it's the last time.
I make a motion that premature discussion on personnel issue would cause the municipality to suffer substantial disadvantage.
I'll second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to establish the reason for the executive session as a personnel matter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I further make a motion to actually enter into executive session for discussion of said personnel issue and to allow Town Administrator Nick Zias to remain in the room with the show. Is that correct?
Yep. Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Glenn to enter into the executive session and allow County Administrator Zias to remain in the room. That would just go there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is. Um. It is eight twenty-seven and we're back in regular session. Uh, is there any motions that need to be made out of the?
Well, there are, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion that we appoint Cynthia Browning as interim town administrator to fill in for several hours a week, uh, once town administrator Zias departs us. And that would be paid at an hourly rate to be determined.
Second. Motion made by Matt and seconded by Jamie to, uh, point as an interim town administrator. Yes.
Is it discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, as the motion says, we're still working out the details. We're gonna look at um, what P. Squires was paid when he filled in before. And I want to make it very clear that I will still be doing my regular select board duties and compensated with that stipend and this will only be for additional work that I would not otherwise be doing. And I will be keeping a record of an hour, hourly task list of hours and what I did. And, um, right now I'm thinking twelve hours a week or something like that, but we're just gonna, we're gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be developing and we will, to be determined and we will keep the public inform, um, I do, I think it's a little bit of a, of a funny arrangement, well, but we've done this before. And I think it, um, it serves the town to have continuity so that I can keep the, hold down the corner and keep the light on or whatever until we, uh, replace Mr. Zias. And I appreciate the board's faith in me and I will abstain on the voting on this motion.
Any other discussion or questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And, uh, we have one additional motion and that would be that I will make a motion to post the town administrator position using the position profile that Janet so conveniently provided us and was developed on our last town administrator hire with the one addition in the bullet points to add an on-call aspect to that job description. So, um, town administrator Zias and Janet can work together to get that posted. And we will be posting that on VLCT, Indeed, LinkedIn, the town's website and social media.
Second.
Motion made by, uh, Matt and seconded by Cynthia to, uh, post the relevant, uh, position for the town administrator and the various sites as discussed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Liquor licenses.
Okay. So the next item is liquor licenses and these are, uh, just verbal approval. So the, there's a one-time occasion for the arts and enrichment program DBA at Arlington Commons. And there's an outside consumption for West Mountain Inn as well as first class for West Mountain Inn and a, I think it's also an outside, third-class hotel license for uh, West Mountain Inn. So, West Mountain Inn is three.
Okay. So the first one is a limited event, one-time occasion license to Arlington Arts and Enrichment Program, also known as Arlington Commons. Um, now this is verbal approval, is this correct?
Yeah.
So, motion to approve?
Yep. Third, second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve the one-time outside consumption for the commons. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, now I make a motion to, um, authorize three different licenses for Arlington Express Mountain Inn. A third-class license, a first-class license and an outside consumption permit, all concerning the consumption of liquor. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Cynthia made the motion and Matt seconded it to approve the, the three different, uh, permits for the Arlington West Mountain Inn. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Who's the signs up there? Um, the next item on the agenda is the highway budget department certification.
We'll get the kiosk.
We'll get out the.
We'll do that.
You have to be at the bottom of that.
Yeah.
This is just our annual.
So this is, uh, you recall, we do this every year. And this is to certify to the state that we'd spend at least three hundred dollars per mile on roads. This certification is vastly over that.
Yeah.
Uh, this total certification is, uh, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars on our roads. So it is way over the minimum state requirement. So it is way over the minimum state requirement. So uh, we're just a motion to approve them. And second, we can vote that, sign it, ask everything.
I make a motion to approve Arlington's annual financial plan for town highways for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Um.
Usually call it Form TA sixty.
Form TA sixty as presented to the board.
I'll second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve Form TA sixty to certify the spending on roads for the town for the year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item is appointments. And there's a list. And do we need to do these one at a time?
You can just.
Or I'll just do the slate, do it as a slate.
Yeah, do the slate for the, those that are to be discussed, I would say.
Okay. Yep. So. So, department list, all, all the members view, appointed or reappointed. Uh, I will list out my name and the body that there will be appointed to. Um, Jenna Tate and Mary Ann Holmes to three-year terms on the planning commission. Joan Nash to the Benedict Gunning Regional Commission. Karen Lee to a three-year term on the energy committee. Joan Nash and Alexandra Ernst to the, to two-year uh, terms on the energy committee. Louis Perrow to a two-year term on the zoning board of adjustment. Amy Bowman, who is a new appointee, to a two-year term on the zoning board of adjustment. Nick Zias to a two-year term as enter, emergency management director, uh, if desired. So we'll take a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the slate of appointments as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Cynthia to approve the slate as presented. All those in. Yes, discussion.
New members we were supposed to have come in so that we knew who we were appointing.
Yeah, Amy did not, so if you want to drop her from the slate and request to come in next meeting, that perfectly fine. But every other new me, every other member is someone who's agreed something else.
Some of.
So if they're already, like, Mary Ann and Jen, Jen will be the DBA, Mary Ann or John here.
I would say that we move forward with the appointment, but we just asked.
Yeah. 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 Just the next meeting day.
Yeah.
Um, but.
I just, some of these names, I don't know who they are, and I don't.
I want to approve somebody.
You want to see a face to the name, right?
Yep.
I'll never approve.
All right, I have one more sheet of this.
Yes, I will.
One more now.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So then there is a, two communications union district uh, appointments currently are Jamie and Cynthia. Uh, if you guys are good with reappointing you, that's fine. If somebody else wants to, that's fine too. I'll leave that open for discussion.
Um, I'm willing to keep doing it.
I'm willing to step down.
Okay?
I did it once, I don't want to do it again.
You can win one and leave the other up.
Yeah, we can leave the other.
Leave it open?
No.
Honestly, I've never heard so many acronyms in all my life.
I know what they all mean. I mean, I can actually do it if I absolutely have to, it's just.
Where are the meetings?
They've canceled the meeting for tonight.
It's Wednesday, it's.
Is there still a lot that the CUD is doing, given the fact?
No, they keep canceling meetings after meetings.
Well, I think that's quorum issues.
They s, they, I mean, they sign with Fidium, Consolidated Fidium, right? And Starlink has the other ARDOF areas.
Why don't, why don't I try to, why don't you reappoint me and I will try to get an update and bring it back to the board?
That would be helpful.
That makes sense.
That would be helpful.
Okay. Um, and then in terms of I swap, um, I think that I should be appointed at least temporarily so that we have someone to do that.
As I do in my little.
Yeah.
Little list, it's really good to be, being held by the administrator right now. We just need someone performed because it's a very critical time, but solid waste alliance as it improves itself.
That'll be two separate motions, correct?
Uh, yeah.
You can just make one motion. Cynthia, Cynthia, the CUD and I swap.
So I make a motion.
Union District and the uh.
I make a motion to uh, reappoint Cynthia Browning to uh, the Communications Union District and to leave uh, the current, the other seat open for now. Um, and also to appoint uh, Cynthia Browning to the um, Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance I swap.
I'll make, I'll second that.
Motion made by Glenn and seconded by Matt to appoint Cynthia as the uh, Communication Union District Director representative and the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance I swap appointee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, then reconfiguring the firehouse committee, um, Matt ordered on that email from the rescue squad the other day.
Yes.
Um, that, so, we, we discussed if the rescue squad was going to be involved in a potential building, which they are now interested in. Um, expanding the committee now, the committee is mostly a, a thinking about things committee and, and, and fundraising, planning committee rather than site committee. So, um, so it's currently six, it can be expanded into each, um, with the two members.
Okay, so tell me exactly what the committee is working on.
They got the site plan as designed, they just had a conversation.
It's by plan for DUC.
DUC, yes, for DUC.
And then we just had a conversation with the squad last week asking, hey, if we maybe carve out some space eventually, um, and, and enter theme the idea of fire rescue, knowing that we're kind of stopping for me or the.
Because we can't really do anything until we organize.
So we're gonna look for some concept drawings.
Drawings.
Architectural.
I guess.
Artists.
Yeah.
Drawn.
Yeah.
Of what a building.
And we did have something from years ago. We had a drawing.
We had one that I had done years ago, but that is different than that.
Oh, no, it was for that, the clinic.
For the clinic, correct, yeah.
So the next step is really to find some funding through various sources, hopefully, for an architectural rendition and.
Well, if there's room for the rescue squad, I think it makes a lot of sense. I just want to be sure there's room.
We.
You, you do.
We, 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 we had some discussions, the firehouse, we had discussions here in the meeting. And that's where we said, you know, we really need to ask them again if they would be interested.
Good.
Um, I had some good ideas.
And the interesting thing is by adding EMS into that could open us up for some additional funding opportunities. So it could be a win-win for both parties.
Yeah, we talked about different um, configurations of how they get in the building. Do they turn over their building, do they sell their building?
They lease.
For lease or rent or whatever.
Yeah.
So we, we talked, so they're, they want to be a part of it, they're gonna come back with some of their props and ideas.
That's great.
And they already have that number.
And said that they were interested, so.
Okay, excellent.
So I will, I will make a motion to reconfigure the firehouse committee to include two additional members from the rescue squad and appoint Sunny Tier and Marty Ariyan to those positions.
Second.
Motion made by Glenn and seconded by Cynthia to reconfigure the firehouse committee to include two additional members from rescue squad, uh, and appoint Sunny Chair and Marty Ariyan to those positions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Um, not to be.
Yeah, go ahead.
Not to be too picky, there are three select board members almost.
There are.
Yeah, Matt was a member of the public.
Pardon?
Um, Matt was a member of the public.
Okay, do we, are they worn?
They are worn, yeah.
Okay.
Cause I have a phone.
All right, pay attention.
Yeah, no, it's a good catch, I brought that up at the meeting too, because originally it was two select board.
Right, and you were not on the board.
And I wasn't on the board.
It went from a subcommittee to a committee.
To a committee, it is a committee.
Cynthia, since you were appointed for this, I'm going to give this to you to take down and fill out a sign in front of her.
Okay.
So she can test to be.
Got it.
At the station of appointment.
Yep.
Um, okay.
And that is taken care of.
That's for a grant. Um, the only sort of it is, we got awarded the grant a couple of years ago. I put it, I sought bids, every contractor that I talked to said, I'll think about it and then no. Um, so uh, yeah, it's, I, so ultimately, um, the funding didn't line up with the, hence the actual final bid costs or, or even final estimate costs of the project. Uh, so we just need, need an authorization to withdraw from this, because we're not gonna cut twenty trees for sixteen thousand dollars. That's, um.
And where are, so we've identified twenty.
We had identified them, they, they are so close to wires that it became much more expensive for a tree. Um, and they're in the vicinity of Buffalo. So I'm just seeking a, let's close this grant down because even with an extension.
Not, that's not feasible.
It's not.
So sooner or later, the wire, the utilities will cut them down for their people's.
Sooner or later, the utilities will cut them down. The ash borer is moving slower than we initially anticipated when we got the initial reports that it kicked down twenty twenty-one. We were expecting the high off structure to start happening by now. It has not happened, the bugs have moved slowly. So we just need this authorization to uh, withdraw from the grant, so they.
I make a motion to withdraw from the ash borer grant.
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Jamie to withdraw officially from the ash borer grant for the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, do you want to do the transfer of the?
Yeah, we'll do the kiosk.
Let's do the kiosk maybe. Transfer, that's easy.
We got a letter, it's, I, I printed it out for all of you guys from the Saffra Pro Commons, where they requested after they made a preliminary meeting with BD and some hotel industry people and the Saffra Pro Commons, and made interest in moving the kiosk down the front lawn, which had been initially paid for by the chamber, which has since gone under and then just kind of defaulted to us. So nominally, we own it, um, we have the, we prepared it in the past. Um, I prepared it in the past, so, um, so this would move this down to the commons so that they could use it as part of a, a tourism effort so that they can use, they can post things that are tourism related on it, which fits the intended purpose of what this was set up for. And ultimately, people, people come into town hall, they look at it, come into town hall and say, hey, what tourism resources do you have for us? We have none, and it's not easy to consolidate, though, that requires a bunch of work. Um, so if they're gonna, gonna make it a tourism hub, it could really be helpful for them. So we would just need to.
I guess I just, I, I guess I don't think that's as good a location just in terms of accidental people because this area with the church and the cemetery, you know, and stewards and everything, there, there's a lot more just people stopping and, but maybe if the kiosk, I guess, my word, I don't know where they're gonna put the kiosk because the good thing about this is that it's invisible, and so people are like, oh, you know, I'll go see if it's on that. And I just.
I, I, I think it'd be, it's not doing us any good not having anything on it other than a twenty-year-old map.
So I'm not opposed to it, I just.
But, um, yeah, I think they could do a lot better with it. Um, and it takes maps that we are currently maintaining and making so we don't have to maintain it. And that is the protectors.
So we would no longer roll.
You're, you're, you're authorizing giving it to them and saying, you get it out, you be, you bring it down there, you deal with it, I do keep it. Um, this is my agenda for this.
And we'll, and we'll, we'll have to, there's, there'll be a little, isn't there like old square?
There, we'll leave the flower bed where it is, and it, and we can let the garden plant continue to plant that. Was actually, their flowers grow a lot better when they're not in that shape.
Yeah, I make a, I make a motion to um, authorize the Arlington Commons to take custody of, take ownership of the informational kiosk from located in front of town hall.
I'll second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to authorize the transfer of the kiosk in front of town hall to the Arlington Commons. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You clarify, where the heck is it?
I know, I can't see it either.
Right there.
Also on the way up.
Okay.
I suppose you have it somewhere. Of course, you guys aren't tourists, but. I think kiosk, I think of like.
No, it's a sign. Yeah, it's a sign of the road.
It's a sign.
With Hannibal.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah.
That's.
They must have moved it.
Oh, I know.
Consolidated.
We thought it was.
Oh.
Yeah. I, I didn't know what to call it.
Sign.
It was twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Signboard.
Signboard.
Yeah.
Big chicken.
That's.
Any other items that we need to add?
Probably got a little, she's a meat bird.
Uh, it's down here.
It's just the old.
So you get the white.
The West Arlington Cemetery, sent, uh, Natalie Taylor, the cemetery commissioner called me, and they have a, they have scheduled a refurbishment of stones that have been tipped over or are out of alignment, whatever. It's a volunteer organization. Um, ironically, the guy that heads it up knows, uh, what's his name? Buried there?
What?
Is he buried there? No, no.
The, the old cemetery association.
Yeah, he's, he's one of the other cemetery commissioners.
Bill Bryan.
Bill Bryan.
From Bill Bryan.
Okay.
Corrections officer, and they worked with him together, they were both. So anyway, Bill knew somebody would do this unbeknownst to Natalie, but she was very happy, and she was asking if the town could provide the small pickup. And a load of sherpac, you know, and they're leveling the stones out. And I said I didn't think it was a problem, but I'd bring it to the board. Let us.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have a little remark about.
Mark already agreed to this. Uh, I talked to Mark, we're also getting a, a donation from one of the uh, the new mural home in Bennington is donating the cleaning materials.
Okay.
Wow.
And the lions are.
In the lab, they're doing labor.
For them. And.
Have breakfast or whatever.
There's a number of volunteers that are also.
I look forward to being a volunteer on this project, it's gonna be a really cool project. Um, that will really do a great job a lot of things down there.
Yep.
So, yeah, we just want to make sure that we're not disallocating highly resources that are sent from the board.
Right.
The motion to approve allocation of a truck and shirt pack, a load of shirt pack to support those pairs in the West Arlington Cemetery.
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Jamie to uh, buy a truck and a load of shirt pack to the house of refurbishing the West Arlington Cemetery. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. The next item, is there any other business we brought before the board?
Mark wanted me to bring up, um, he was at Capital Tractor today and checking in on the loader. All of the parts for the loader um, were delivered to Saskatchewan or somewhere.
There's no.
And the loader that is out there, all their parts got delivered to Greenway.
Nice, nice. Okay.
Um.
There's gonna be.
The label here.
Kind of dip code thing, you know?
Somebody put the wrong label on or something.
Oh, that's it.
The wrong pallet, yeah.
So, in any event, um, until they get the parts, can't do anything. They've got numerous vehicles apart over there, and they can't do anything because they're waiting for parts on all of them. Um, but at April first, um, they told him that all of their winter rentals that go out for cleaning parking lots and stuff like that will be back.
Oh, yeah.
And if we are in need of something, they will get one over here for us.
Good.
Um, so he wanted to just update the board on that.
And I saw them upgrading today, so.
Yep, they're starting to touch some of the lighter stuff without getting too deep. Um.
Yeah, I got a nice little jump on my road.
Yeah.
And the, the new flail mower that you bought with our Benoni, that is in, and also a travel tractor.
That's great.
Um, so we look forward to a better rolling product this year, certainly.
And where will that live?
Like, that mower, I'm not even quite sure where he's gonna store it. But that certainly, it attaches to the tractor.
Also, it's just an attachment.
Tell him I put all this dirt back on his road for him in front of my house.
Mark had cleaned out the yellow barn, um, so we're, we're in great shape.
I know what I have for other business. It is March. It would be really nice if we could get the Christmas wreath up in front of town hall.
Is it still on the cover bridge?
So I did, they were talking about, Mark was talking about sending a couple guys down there to do that. I don't know if they have yet or not.
Yeah, you know, you got, Christmas got it, you're gonna get a ticket, you know, it's like.
Well, I always joke that I could send.
Easter wreath.
Uh, two questions, one, uh, and you may have covered it somehow, I'll plead my own stupidity for not reading this. Update on the Benedict Crossing Bridge? I know the last time, um, um, there was supposed to be people coming in to.
They have not come yet.
Okay.
They haven't finished though.
No, they have not come into, because they've got to look at the abutments in a lot more detail. They have not been here, whether we've had.
I'm guessing they won't be here for another couple of weeks.
And the second one, since you mentioned about storing something in yellow barn, is that up to code now?
Which code?
Yeah, at one meeting, I think you said it Cynthia, oh, uh, the yellow barn is not to, um.
It's not your way to air code, because it's not public access.
It's safe.
You just wanna. Found stuff.
Okay, there's an office in there.
Having been spent a lot of time, meaning it's last year, it didn't really, because you have human gripping patterns.
And in terms of, I mean, the, the beams have been repaired. The, the support. There's been a lot of. It's not a, it's not a public building.
So I had a couple more things too.
Yep, go ahead.
At the park, they are, um, they've pulled the culvert out closest to this first bridge on three thirteen, which because it was set too high and the water was not flowing through it, so they've taken that out, they're letting it settle for a couple days. And then they're gonna reset that. Um, I want to thank the guys that all went down and got the majority of the bark spread under all the playground equipment. So there's been a ton of kids down there playing on it already.
Wow.
Beautiful.
Um, talked with Nick and got the guys to go down and spread a bunch of that, so that's really good. Um, working on the pole for light down there. Um, and I had a weird request from someone to do with the commons about
Sweeping? Yes, they, they, I talked with Bill Bullock and Mark today. Um, and the commons is willing to reimburse up their costs for sweeping their, their driveway. So I asked Mark to, to go and do it and then, um, and then take track of time so we can, we can bill them for the, at the exactly what you're using beam out of equipment rates and stuff. It's a quick pass, so it shouldn't be like one hour of downtime, but that's an app, that's a hundred bucks worth of revenue that, that we weren't expecting this year. That's not for you.
Okay, I'm, I'm comfortable with having that happen, but in general, I see no reason why town equipment or employees should be working on private property.
That just seems familiar, there's plenty of contractors.
I, I just, you know, I mean, if this has already happened, I don't have.
No, the only reason I brought it up is because we had a request back in the winter for the food shelf, um, when they were having some issues with plowing and ice stuff, and we didn't. As far as I know, we didn't do anything.
I, I don't, I don't care, I don't, I, I have a problem with doing this. Has it been agreed to?
It doesn't, you can, you always have the authority to rule this. I thought it was a my or nothing to, to agree given, or, or say a hundred bucks worth of time.
And the hours, and it's municipal on private property, like me asking. If they're gonna reimburse anything, I wanted to just, they should decide.
No, but it's, it's like, it's just not, it's not. I mean, I have, I want to support their activities, I want to support the. It's just not what.
This doesn't have to be a cross-up to be that you, you need to commit to. Um, I have to go back and say we can't actually do this.
And I think that going forward, our policy is we do not ever do this, and if it comes up, we have a case where we do want to do it case by case, but the policy is we do not.
It's different if there's like we damage it, right? There's a huge I don't know, there's a huge storm, like whatever it might be, and we need to help people out because we're neighbors helping neighbors and like that's completely different than this situation.
I didn't have a problem with it, I just, when the, the, I don't know.
It's a const, it's a, it's a.
When the food shelf asked for some help and we weren't able to help them.
Yeah.
I'm like, this is one and the same, and I just didn't want to, I didn't know what they, how affected you to next.
Yeah, they, they sent me many, many.
I, I don't even understand why they'd be asking us, whatever gravel is there is state gravel, it's not our gravel.
Yeah, they, the gist that I got and to avoid belaboring is the point is that they were struggling to find a contractor that had the necessary equipment to use this, a sweeper on it. We happen to already have ours out, that's, that was the, the simple thing. But ultimately, your, your point about boundaries still is a really big deal and, and importantly
I think.
And we're going through a transition, we should be making sure that our boundaries are.
And it doesn't mean that there will be exceptions, but I think it's gotta be a hard boundary to do, and I apologize for.
No, I appreciate the feedback because it's an important thing that we do set a hard boundary that people will try to take advantage of a change in our gene and re-ask things like they've been told no in the past. This is an important precedent to set.
Oh yeah, I was gonna say, no, that'd be great.
It's gonna be great. So I have nothing to report to the TA report. Not at all, you're gonna get horns.
Okay.
Okay, so the first one is gonna be the water department, um, the key components here are Green Mountain Power for thirteen hundred Art Creek Engineering, that's the hydrologic study that they're doing, and so we're paying, as we go along, two thousand seven hundred seventy-five. Um, meter equipment, remember we're upgrading and replacing the meters, and that is thirteen hundred forty-five. Um, so I will make a motion to approve the check warrant report WD number six dated three twenty-one twenty-five. Motion to approve Arlington Water Department operational costs for a total of six thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-four cents.
Well, second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve check warrant report WD number six. Total amount of six thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-four cents. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next, the next will be, um, for the operational expenses for the general fund in the town of Arlington itself. Um, once again, the biggest components in this list are Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance, sixteen thousand six hundred plus. Um, town insurance, so that's insurance of the buildings and all that kind of stuff, liabilities. Twelve thousand six hundred seventy-three. Peckham Industries gravel, we need, still need that gravel on the road, five thousand one hundred seventy-nine. Um, and Benedict County County Regional Pi- Commission for the SWIP, that's the solid waste.
Yes, IOP and the half of waste.
So it's, it's for B C R C's work on both of those things for six thousand, so fourth quarter, six thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars. Altogether, I make a motion to approve the amount of sixty-four thousand and fourteen dollars and fifty-four cents for check warrant report number six, town of Arlington.
Well, second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve check warrant report number six. Total amount of sixty-four thousand dollars, fourteen, sixty-four thousand, fourteen dollars and fifty-four cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is done by Matt, seconded by Jamie, we are adjourned.